Good evening and welcome to the January 13th meeting of the Eureka Springs City Council. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Joyce Keller?
Here.
Terry McLone?
Here.
Perky Pyle?
Here.
David Mitchell, absent with notice, and Mickey Schneider?
Here.
We have four.
Please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd just like to state that Mayor Pate had some surgery and he's recovering fine from it, but he's not able to make tonight's meeting, so I'm mayor pro temp tonight. Let's see, first item will be approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second. I have to add one item to the agenda. It'll be under new business. It will be re-acquisition by Parks of the adjacent building at 531 Spring. That'll be number 11 under new business.
Repeat that, James. Re-acquisition.
Re-acquisition by the Parks Department of the adjacent building at 531 Spring. Okay. Any additions, deletions?
I'd like to add an agenda item, to set a workshop date for parking rate increase for special events. That's regarding ordinance 2189. Set a date for that workshop.
Is that number 12 under new business?
That is correct.
Is there a second?
No, second.
Let's see. We need to move a couple of items under new business since we have guests here tonight. If I could get a motion to move item one. Mr. Perky Pyle?
Yes, let's move item one under new business to the first item under unfinished business.
Do you have a second?
Number one.
Second. What are we going to do with that?
We're going to move Trails Plan, Bricks Driveway, Rock Street to first item under unfinished business because they're larger.
Do you want to provide that with it?
Let's see, you're not, that's not the same agenda I have here.
That's number seven of the old business.
Yes, I'm sorry, Terry. Yes, that is correct, and move number seven up there as well, although that one will be postponed, I think.
Right, until February 15th.
Yeah, so we're going to delete item seven from unfinished business.
Yes, it's going to be postponed.
All right, you've got two different things. You're deleting it or you're just postponing it?
Postponing it. It won't be deleted.
The Trails Plan, we're just going to discuss that or something because we're missing some people here tonight. Well, I mean, it just, I get so many, it's controversial.
Which one?
I think the whole council.
And some of the folks that are...
If we're going to vote on anything, I think the whole council should be here.
It's a discussion, discussion at this point in time. Let's see, did we get a second on that one?
I think I did.
Okay. And then, do we need to make this number seven postpone as a separate?
It's already postponed.
Okay, very good.
Which number seven?
Number seven, unfinished business.
February 15th.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mitchell had asked to, if I would postpone number three under new business, Clean City Ordinance, although it has been provided to everybody for review and discussion. If we, if we want to discuss, we can, but, you know, it might be better to have Mr. Mitchell here to lead us through some of that discussion.
It's sort of his baby. I mean, he's the one that's been pushing this, and he's done a lot of work on this. He should be here.
Second. Postpone to next meeting.
Second.
Okay, could I get a motion to move number six up to the second position?
And move to, move number six under unfinished business to the second.
No, I'm sorry, it's new business, the Film Industry Tax Incentive.
I'm sorry, yeah. Number six under new business, let's move it up to the second item of business under unfinished business.
Do you have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, any more changes? Ms. Snyder?
Number two under unfinished, the amended land bank ordinance. I'm not sure what that is. Is that the rewording or is that what Mr. Levine was bringing forward to be discussed or what?
We need to have the attorney's opinion on this, that it should have been brought to the table at the next meeting, now through the time it was defeated.
Which we couldn't do because of the weather.
Okay.
That's why I'm asking what's this issue?
Right, right. So it would have to come from a majority vote to bring it back to the table.
Okay, well, okay. No, we have to bring it. I move to bring back to the table the amended land bank ordinance.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Is this what we were discussing before?
That's what...
With or without any changes, I guess is my question.
We're just bringing it back to the table.
Okay.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any changes, additions, deletions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissions Committee's authority reports. Do we have anybody here? Well, we need to do some of our housekeeping before we get too far along, such as establishing Robert's Rules of Order. It's at the bottom. Shouldn't we set rules and procedures first off, since this is a new meeting?
Technically, you're supposed to do it at this meeting. You don't have to do it before the meeting. You can operate under what you had previous.
Okay, well, I'll just leave it as physician then. Let's, yeah, we need to go ahead and establish who our council members will be as our CAPC representatives for 2014. Ms. Snyder?
Did you all want to keep doing it?
It's fine.
I think, I think we've been working well together, and I think we're going to...
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we redo James and Terry on CAPC.
Second.
Move one at a time.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you can get sufficient number of votes.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we accept Terry McLone back on CAPC.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Let's see, go ahead and vote for yourself. Any opposed? Okay, welcome back, Terry. Ms. Snyder?
Make a motion to accept James as our other one for CAPC.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, and away we go. I guess that takes care of that business. We're on to public comments. One? Glenn Brown?
Hello, council. I'm Glenn Brown. I'm the manager of Abundant Transportation here at Eureka Springs, and first off, I'd like to say thank you for approving the amended limo agenda, but upon reading it, I believe I found what is a very large loophole, and I would like to see it come back before the council to go over it again and see if I'm looking at it wrong or what needs to be done to correct the loophole that was found. I've spoken to some council members, and they seem to think that it is a loophole, and it just, it really needs to be clarified, what kind of vehicle they can be in and what they cannot be in.
What, I'm sorry, what are you talking about?
It's just, we can't do a Q and A.
Oh, okay, that's right.
And that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the Brickses and the Trail Plan driveway at Rock Street. Are they here? Yeah, please.
Hi, I'm confused.
We just moved you guys up, so...
Right.
Well, it's my understanding this is a result of our last meeting, and Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Perky Pyle wanted this added to tonight's agenda. So since Mr. Mitchell's not here, Mr. Perky Pyle could brief her on.
Well, I think, Ms. Bricks, if you would like to make your, you know, state your point, make your presentation, that'd be great.
Hello, my name is Rachel Bricks, and this is my husband, Ryan Bricks, and we live at One Magnetic, and I had originally, this originally started with, I wrote a letter to council back, I would think it was December 18th or 19th, and it was because there was a Facebook post on the Eureka Springs Trails Committee's page that had shown pictures and stuff about what's called a rock loop trail that goes through our property and comes out onto Magnetic Road, and there were some pictures taken of items on private property. I think you all got the email where I had sent that, and I had several concerns that I had raised at the time. There was another post also of another picture of the rock loop trail, and when I had emailed the Parks Director about where the trail goes from, it was indicated that the trail had was starting at the Artist Colony and that it ended out onto Magnetic, and I asked where the trail came out onto Magnetic, and he said it came out onto our driveway. And my main concerns, which you already know that I won't rehash those, but that was under your direction, that that was being reviewed at this time, and I didn't understand all of the concerns that went along with that of why there was even a trail being put there right now without a Trails Plan being presented or any knowledge whatsoever of any of that, so...
Mr. Perky Pyle?
Well, my understanding in discussing with our Parks Director, who is sitting over here, who can also get up and talk about that, but just briefly, my understanding is that, Ms. Bricks, that there probably won't be any cut trail, definitive trail for another two to three years, is that correct, Mr. Levine? And that this posting was probably just some exuberance from the Eureka Springs Trails Committee folks, and I think that that was, I think that was duly corrected. Am I, am I correct about that, Mr. Levine? So...
May I ask how it was corrected?
Well, how was it?
Excuse me?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You'll have to come to the microphone to answer that.
Well, in other words, it was corrected in the sense that, my understanding is that the, that Springs, I mean, that Trails Committee was asked not to post and not to actually go on that particular trail right now. So, Mr. Levine, if you would be so kind to just address that.
Actually, more specifically, we asked all the Trails Committee members not to go on any of the proposed routes that we have, because we realized that not everybody is familiar with where the public right of way is, and also, when we put our master plan in place, we're going to also put a disclaimer there that none of these trails have been surveyed or are laid out to the degree that we would be comfortable that anybody wouldn't be trespassing, so that's how we chose to address it.
So, if I could continue on, but, go ahead and stay there. So, these unopened trails are not available for public access at this point.
Well, they are public right of ways, but we're not going to advertise them as, that the public should use them. That's not a dodge, that's a, that's a saying that, we can't keep people off of public right of ways, but we can certainly try and dissuade them from, from using them as part of the trail.
Yeah, I think in this particular instance, the people that were taking photographs got off the trail, and because that trail happens to be behind my house, and I walked it with another homeowner, and so I can see, you know, where you're going to have people like traveling through private properties and...
Sure.
You know, uninvited guests, so to speak. So, yeah, that'd be great if we could continue to do that, make that well-known with your, with your Trails Committee.
Yes.
Trails...
And we will.
Folks, yeah. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Bricks, did you have anything else that you wanted to bring forward regarding that? Did we answer your concern about the trail issue?
At this time, I think so.
Okay, thank you very much.
And you'll be back on the agenda February, we'll have an opinion from the city attorney on February 15th. Is that the right date for the meeting?
Well, the meeting is on the 10th.
10th.
And I think we're going to have to, when we get to that point, we need to change that date to that time.
So it's, you're still on the agenda?
I understand, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two will be Film Industry Tax Incentive.
Thank you, Mr. Vito. I'm Sandy Martin, and I'm here with Mike Bishop from the Chamber of Commerce and Christopher Crane, who graciously came up from Little Rock. He is the executive director of the Arkansas Film Commission and Arkansas Production Alliance, and we're here basically to request that we help generate some revenues for Eureka Springs through a film industry incentive program. And what we're asking for, and I've got a very quick little top line of the proposal for you to consider, as well as some benefits and advantages to Eureka Springs, we're basically asking for you to consider codifying a city ordinance that provides a tax incentive to the film and broadcast industry through a tax rebate. We're hoping for a 5% total that could be a combination between the city tax rebate and the CAPC, and we know that there are a tremendous amount of details that need to be hammered out, like minimum production costs and caps on, on the rebate on the taxes, and we're willing to work with that, and Christopher has also offered their attorneys and their expertise to help us put that, that structure together, so it's beneficial, legal, and it mirrors the, the state's incentive. Arkansas has a very aggressive incentive for the film industry, and Christopher's working very hard to develop that throughout the state. We would be the first and only municipality in the state of Arkansas to have such an incentive, which would be tremendous, and I'm going to shut up now and turn it over to Christopher, because he is much more eloquent and knowledgeable about the situation and can explain why this is important to Eureka Springs. I will say, and we have available, well, Christopher's getting ready, he did send me this morning, an Arkansas Film Industry Analysis that was done, that is full of wonderful information. One of the things that struck me was of the film support services that are available in the state of Arkansas, 36% of them are located in Northwest Arkansas, and the thing that we believe is really important about this incentive is it's not just a, an incentive or economic impact that hits one industry or one segment of our population. It covers hairdressers, to hardware stores, to electricians, to plumbers, can create some jobs and definitely create revenue and create a lot of buzz for Eureka Springs and the state.
Hi there, council members. It's nice to be in Eureka. Thanks for having me here. I have a couple of handouts that I'm going to give you as well. This is from the U.S. Production Incentives at a Glance. This is Cast and Crew, and this gives you an in-depth look at incentives around the United States and what each state incentive is, and this is 2014, so this is up-to-date as we have. To kind of backtrack a little bit, incentives in and of themselves are very organic. Of course, it depends on legislatures and city councils and gubernatorial administrations, et cetera. We look at incentives not as in a, as a must, but it's a must-have because other places have them. We wish that we could have everyone lay down their nuclear arms and have no incentives whatsoever for economic development, but that's never going to happen. Who's going to do it first? Currently, we have a 20% state incentive on goods and services with an additional 10% for Arkansas workforce, so which means that we incentivize our local labor at 30% production cost. We're wanting people to hire locally. You guys in Eureka Springs, of course, would benefit from this because you are kind of the amalgam of all of the creative industries here. You have your writers and your seamstresses and your plumbers and your hardware and, as Sandy so eloquently stated. Yes, ma'am?
For the benefit, we have a lot of people who watch this program on television, a lot of locals, and I'm not sure they understand incentives. When you talk about incentives and rebates, are you saying that, okay, does this, the way, the way this works, does the production company keep track of all the money it has spent, and then you refund a percentage of that money that they've spent? We're not talking about rebating just the tax that they paid on the services that they got?
That's correct. Yeah, it is, it is all of their raw expenditures. So at the end of a production, they come to us with a proof of performance, which is another kind of caveat to this, there are no monies expended until they've expended, and within the community, they've expended their budget. And so at the end of it, they come to us with a proof of performance. It is audited by the Department of Finance and Administration, and then from that is when they get their rebate. It's a 120-day process legislatively.
What would this mean to a film company? The average film budget, what we're talking about, well, I don't know, really low budgets, it's got to be somewhere around 16, 18 million dollars.
Well, that's independent, independent film nowadays is truly in a 500,000 to about a $5 million range, and it means a lot. So, and, and an extra couple of percent really helps a specific community become head and shoulders above other communities. 5% is a lot, especially if you're talking about, you know, a $20 million project.
So it's truly an incentive to a film company to come somewhere where there is this?
That is correct.
Okay, okay.
Yes, and, you know, and like I said, it's an arms race. As you look at these sheets here, and I have another one from 2012 that I wanted to give you as well, so you could kind of see the organic process of what the incentives have taken on, and I'll let you guys pass this around. This is from 2012. When, when I came in office in 2007, we were one of two states in the United States without an incentive, and our industry was pretty much dead. Since then, in 2009, we passed our first film incentive, and then, this past year, we began to build the infrastructure, the workforce, and all of the components that truly make up the film industry, and we saw fit, and legislature did as well, to go ahead and let us raise that a little bit to become more competitive. Now, you will see in, in the 2014 segment that our surrounding states are still a little bit ahead of us, especially Louisiana and Oklahoma and Georgia. Those are our competitive states, and a community such as yourselves in the state of Arkansas, I think, would benefit from this for two reasons. First of all, you're not expending any monies until they actually come into your community and spend those monies. And then secondly, it, again, it elevates you to a status that no other community in the state of Arkansas has right now, so you would be the first one. My suggestion also would be, and I know that Sandy mentioned this, that, that my office in the State Economic Development Commission help you guys structure this. Morris Jenkins, who helped create the legislation, legislation that we now run in the state, is in my office, and I would love to see you guys look at that as a template, kind of a blueprint, and follow that, and literally just piggyback on exactly what we're doing. It makes the process very, very simple. It goes through an audit procedure by the Department of Finance and Administration, so it would, literally what I'd like to see is it be, be on top of ours.
Ms. Snyder?
So what is it we need to do tonight?
Well, that's a good question. I think that at this point, you know, we, I would love for you guys to look at this issue and look at it as a community, and first of all, I want to make sure that you guys understand what it means. You know, in, in economics, we have, as Sandy said, we have an economic impact analysis that we're bringing to the table as well, as kind of proof, proof of the pudding, so to speak, and that has a multiplier of 1.9 for the state of Arkansas, and so we think it's a good investment for a community. These film companies, as you know, live in this community for a couple of months. It's almost like a two-month convention, and so it really is one of those tourism slated base things that you can take as, as a feather in your cap. I would like to see you guys look at it on a citywide level and then as your Convention and Visitors Bureau as well, yes?
Is this on all their purchases? I mean, I'm not really sure that I understand exactly what all...
It's on all taxable purchases.
All taxable purchases.
That is correct.
By the company or the people?
Meals, meals, let me finish. Meals, housing, material, whatever they got to use for set construction, anything, anything and everything.
That's correct.
Okay, and then, and then how does that, you might just kind of explain how, you know, if, if it's a $2 million project and they expend $2 million, and that's, that's not inclusive of wages that's paid to their, to the actors and all that do, is that, is that all part of it?
Wages are part of it as well.
They are, okay, and so everything, total encompassing.
That's correct.
So, so if, if they spent $2 million and, and the state's giving them 20% back, is that what I understood you to say? And then you're wanting us to, you know, conceivably put another 5% on top of that? And then, and the Department of Finance and Administration would also, would also audit that and then submit that to the city, I guess, for collection, is that how that works?
Sure, and I think that that, you know, that's...
Or does it, or do they just pull it out of revenues that, that would, you know, that are earmarked for Eureka Springs? for Eureka Springs off that...
Well, considering that it hadn't been structured yet, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, and so I think that there are several ways that you could structure something like that, but I think that that's going to be a long and arduous meeting amongst us all in trying to figure out what the best way to do that, because you just kind of hit on two plans, and I think there are several. One of which is they audit the entire production and you guys just take 5% of that. You know, we look at the complete spend within this particular municipality, and...
It's important to understand that, you know, we're real limited to what we have inside the city limits. I mean, there's a lot of things that, that if, you know, for set construction, things like that may have to be done outside, you know, we can't be responsible for that stuff.
Sure.
But I don't suppose that's not...
And I think that that's a very valid point, and I think that what we would have to do is identify, you know, is there, is there a hardware store within the municipality? And if that hardware store is able to adequately service a production. And so there are things like that that are going to have to be ironed out, so to speak.
Where...
Oh, sure, yeah, okay. Yeah, and as Sandy reminded me, we have the arkansasproduction.com, which is AR Production, which we've been asking every community in Arkansas to go on and populate so that we can see where each vendor is, where each crew member is, et cetera, so that we know what the infrastructure is within each particular community. And I know that Mike and Sandy and Mike, et cetera, have been trying to push that with the local businesses as well, but that is going to be very beneficial for us to determine exactly what is here. And then those expenditures, and I think that you hit a very, very good point, those expenditures that they can't make in the community would probably then have to be negated from the incentive. So, you know, they can't buy the hardware here, and so that wouldn't be incentivized by you guys, but it would be incentivized by us. That would probably be a very important component to your, to the way that you set up your resolution.
Mr. Perkypile?
I'm a little confused here. What it says, the incentive request says our goal is to offer a 5% tax rebate, part coming from the city and part coming from CAPC. That, a tax rebate means that, you know, we've got 11% or so is what we tax all goods for, you know, if CAPC's involved, like, say, for lodging. So, are you saying that that, that they would only be taxed at a rate of, you know, 6%? I mean...
You could set it up that way, but no, that's not, that's not...
Okay, explain a little further to me. I mean, is this 5% that we have to come up with out of city coffers to pay for, how does that pay for us?
I mean, in the long run, yes.
That's what I...
I mean, in the long run, you're going to have to come up with it some way, whether it's taxed off the top or whether it's at the very end with cash. Now, that's something that, again, I don't have an answer to. That's something that you guys would have to formulate.
Okay, so it is a tax incentive?
Right, in the form of a rebate, though. And so that's, that's a little different, yeah.
All right. So, what I'm hearing, okay, of that tax, that CAPC tax and the city tax, what we get is 2.5% in the city. I mean, whatever you buy in the city is taxed at 2.5%. Okay, so what I'm hearing you saying, that we're getting 2.5% from all of this business that we're going to get, but we're supposed to give them 5%, which puts us 2.5% in the hole? Is that what I'm hearing?
2.5% from the CAPC and 2.5% from the city.
Yeah, okay, so we're, in other words, we're breaking even. We get 2.5% from them for what they spent, so we're giving them 2.5% back? Is that what, what this is working out? That's the way the numbers are crunching in my head unless I'm not understanding this. I'm not seeing that we're getting anywhere ahead here.
Man, did you have something?
The city portion is 2.375, not 2.5. And I think that's why it was adjusted to, from, for 2.5% once that realization led...
The city gets 3%?
2.3... The city collects 2.375%.
Yeah, okay.
Separate from what the CAPC...
2.375, and they want, they want 2.5% from us? In other words, 2.5?
We haven't requested it specifically that way. One thing to remember is that it's incremental new dollars that we're hoping to bring in. So it's money that, from a gross standpoint, that has not been spent in the market at all, and we're hoping that that generate, will generate new revenue. That's the incentive part. We're incentivizing film companies to come to spend their money here versus somewhere else.
Yeah, I get that part. That's cool. It's just that it's costing us money. We're paying for it, right? Am I not getting this right? Am I missing something here?
Only if you agree to give 2.5%, but that's not the way we're requesting it. We're requesting it as a 4% to 5% tax rebate total split between the city and CAPC. So CAPC may decide to give 3%, you may decide to give 2%.
Okay, it doesn't say 4%. I'm sorry.
No, 4% to 5%.
All right.
Sorry.
Yeah, and, you know, and one of the ways that we look at this as well is you have your direct spend, your indirect, and then your induced spend in economics. And your direct spend, of course, is if somebody goes into a hotel and they spend $100, and that's the direct spend, and you get your 2% from that. The indirect spend is then what does that hotel owner then go and spend that extra $100 on that wasn't in the community to begin with, like Sandy just said? And then, to trickle down one more time, what does that person that that hotel owner spent that money with then go spend that money within the community? And so, the 2% in the very direct spend, yeah, it's probably, it's not a break even, but the second time that dollar's spent in the community, it is, it's a gain. And then the third time, it's a gain. And so that's, that's the way we look at it, yes?
Mr. McLaughlin?
Basically, if it's a $2 million project, again, and a million of it is going to be spent in Eureka Springs proper, Carroll County, or, you know, that's where it's all going to, you know, they're staying here, so you're looking at, you know, 50 grand is what, when they can document that that's what they've spent here, then the city would have to pony up 50 grand.
Sure.
As a rebate to them, is basically what it is, whether it comes from the city or CAPC or jointly, yeah, it's not hard to understand.
Let me just give you a little history. The last time a movie was shot in Eureka Springs, and that was Crystal, and we were up against Asheville, North Carolina for the location, and CAPC kicked in $25,000. The city rebated the total tax structure to the movie, and they were still leaning toward Asheville, and then restaurants donated half of their menu price to the cast and crew. And with a little help from some of the people in the town, we got the movie to Eureka Springs. But without incentives, I mean, we would have lost it to Asheville. It's just the hard, cold facts of reality. That's why Louisiana is just, so many films are being shot in Louisiana right now because they've got one of the best programs in the country.
And it's twofold. I mean, if you can get them, and if it's anything at all, I mean, it gets Eureka Springs out there, too.
Well, and as Mr. Crane said, it's like a two-month convention in town.
Yeah, and the ancillary benefits as well, you know, are, you know, you hope and pray that, you know, one day you do hit a Field of Dreams or, you know, On Golden Pond, or, you know, one of those films that then really does open the floodgates for tourism, you know. Dyersville, Iowa still has 100,000 people a year go to that little field, and look at that. You know, 40,000 people a year still go to Squam Lake to see the looms, Norman, you know, so it's, the ancillary benefits as well of the film industry, I think, play a large impact in this. And are there any more questions for me? I don't...
You'd asked, what do you want from us today?
What do we do now?
We appreciate that this is a process, and we're here tonight with the initial idea and the initial request, and what we would like to hear from you is some indication of a positive feedback that this is a good economic incentive and a good fit for the creative economy in Eureka Springs. And secondly, we have not presented, of course, to the CAPC yet. We will be doing that at the end of this month. And then hopefully both will agree of some sort, and then we can put the powers that, you know, that need to be put together to start working on a structure that works.
Terry?
I make a motion that whoever needs to get together to start working on an ordinance of this, I mean, it's going to be complicated, even taking what you've got, this is, this is not the typical thing that we, that we do here.
So you're making a motion to add it to the agenda?
Yeah, that a motion be, or that a, an ordinance be prepared so we can, yeah, add it to the agenda, whatever you want to do. I mean, we're, it is, it's on the agenda right now. We're discussing it, so...
The next agenda.
I make a motion that we...
Okay, do I have a second for that?
I'm confused. Don't we need, like, to have the CAPC go through this first? And then we need to all get together?
Well, as they stated, this is a very lengthy process, and we need to get it, we need to get it on the agenda.
There's going to be plenty of time to get everybody on board.
I'll second that, just to get the ball rolling so that we can kind of figure all this out.
I'd like to schedule a workshop.
There'll be lots of time for all of these things.
A lot of this is going to be even difficult to understand.
Well, how can we talk about getting an ordinance started if we don't even know what we're doing?
Trust me, it'll come together.
Some of our ordinances take months and months and months and...
Would it be possible to put this, like, on the agenda to, or bring this up again in February when we hear how the CAPC responded to this? Are we being premature? Well, we can't tell Tim to institute writing an ordinance if, you know, you can't do that. I mean, you've got to get together with the Film Commission and Little Rock and everything else to do this.
These people are going to start bringing that forth to us so we can start looking at it, us, what they have, you know, I'm not sure I can understand maybe some of it, but I'm sure a lot of it's going to be over my head. But we got, you know, we got to, if we're going to start, let's start.
We'll talk about it, well.
Yeah, there'll be plenty of time for that. So, we've got a second, so we've got it on the agenda. Yes, it can.
The motion was to prepare an ordinance.
Which we can't...
Oh, that can be a lengthy process. I mean, it'll be the eventual goal.
That's a motion. I'm just saying.
Well, I mean, that's, and it is, it is a lengthy process for this, but yeah, that's...
But you don't start with an ordinance. That's what you aim for.
Well, there's no timeframe on it, and so...
You want to initiate discussion.
We just needed two council people to get it on the agenda, and we had a second.
The motion was to prepare an ordinance and de-seconded, so we just need to vote on that.
Okay, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'm not in favor of preparing an ordinance at this point. I'm in favor of talking about it.
Of putting it on the agenda, but not starting to work on it.
We're talking about it, it's on the agenda right now.
Just amend your motion.
So the motion failed 2-2. Now we can go on to the next phase.
And just get it on the agenda. Don't talk about it.
Okay.
Mr. Perkypile?
I'd like to make a motion to place this item on next meeting's agenda with the intention to develop an ordinance, and especially after CAPC has been involved in this.
Five seconds.
Second.
Any discussion?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
The ball is rolling.
Uphill.
Yeah. The square is rolling.
Moving right along, amended land bank ordinance, Mr. Perkypile, Mr. Mitchell.
See, did we, we've already addressed this, Mayor Pro-Tim.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we just brought that to the table.
Oh, okay.
We agreed to bring that to the table, or backed for discussion.
Okay, gotcha. Okay.
An ordinance? What is the number of the ordinance we're discussing?
Well, 295.
All we did was just vote to bring it back to table so we could begin to discuss it again.
At the next meeting, right?
At the next meeting.
Oh, at the next meeting. Okay, that's what I didn't understand.
Sorry.
Is that proper procedure, Mr. Attorney? As he squinches his eyes and...
You're kind of stretching the process.
Right.
Since you already had one since my meeting. It really should probably be acted on tonight to some extent, more than just bringing it back to the table.
Okay, so we can just, because Bruce is here, and he's the one who had to actually technically bring it?
He doesn't bring it. Those that voted...
We brought it.
It, in the majority on the last vote.
It died because there wasn't a majority.
So those that voted against it have to bring it back.
Okay.
Which is what has occurred already.
Okay, I was going to say that...
So now it's on the table, and now we should discuss it.
Mr. Perkypile?
I'd like to make a motion to discuss it and have our parks director, our parks chairman...
Do we have a second?
Yes.
Come forward and discuss it. Thank you. Gentlemen?
Yes. I'm going to plead ignorance, which issue we all rely on.
The amended, the one, the land bank committee...
Oh, okay.
The land bank ordinance.
The only thing I have here is ordinance 1628.
As kind of a, to give some perspective on the history of the land bank ordinance, you know, it goes back to the land bank committee, ad hoc committee, self-proclaimed committee. The intent was to identify, and Bruce, describe these 43 odd properties here.
The city has about 99 different properties, you know, including the auditorium, the fire stations, the police stations, things that are built on. And the land bank, a few years ago, started to zero in on a few of the properties that were, what we call, we're calling, isolated. And there's about 43 of them. It's all these little green spots. Some of them, we kind of know where they are, some of them, we have no idea. Number 44 is, it's just somewhere, and number 21 is somewhere, number 37 is somewhere, there's one here somewhere.
Whoa.
No survey or legal description, Rob?
Well, we know, we have a, we have a legal that it's blah, 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 block here somewhere. We even have some that said, can't find it. And so we were originally proposing to find them and see if they were something that we wanted to put in our classifications, if it was, I don't remember them right off the top of my head, but some of them were useful to the city, maybe used for parking or something else, and then there was, you know, we can't find it. Number 32 is a good example. We don't know where it is. Some of them might be pump stations that we're not aware of. A couple of courts could probably identify them. But that's what the whole genesis was, was just to identify these and come back to the council and say, well, here's a description. We've come with a complete picture and all the possible legals we could get on it and say, these are things we'd like to put up for sale so we could use the proceeds from, use the funds for some other purpose, that would be either buying other properties or purchasing right of us. That's it. But that's what started this whole thing.
Bringing that through into this.
Perkypile?
Mr. Featherstone, could you pass that around? I don't think we all have that.
Yeah, it's this.
I don't have a...
2195?
Yeah, I've got some outside.
Which one?
2195.
It's the failed 2195.
2195.
I don't think I have 2195.
Yes, it was at the 1125 meeting, and there was, section seven was a sticking point.
What was section seven?
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, James. Number, what I, what I, I think this all fell apart on was, was on, on me in that, one, that, number two, on conforming open spaces, there may be some of those that at some point the city may want to depart with, too. It, like, it says that the, let's see, I think if I remember this right... this right, that the non-conforming open spaces were gonna be possibly sold off. But there's also conforming spaces that is, that, that could be also in that list, depending on, you know, maybe not now, but, but down the road. I hate to limit it to that, you know, there's really no reason to, uh, to differentiate between the two, I don't think, other than the ones that might be on, on the list that, well, we don't need these, we can, we can certainly offer these up for sale now, because we're, we're sure that these aren't gonna be used. But, you know, I don't think there's any reason to hamstring parks from anything else in the future. Then the second thing was the section seven, and, and, uh, that was my, the big thing in my craw, and that's, that's on the, on the sale of the, the, the right-of-ways and the three-hundred-and-twenty acres, not, not the parcels, but, but the, uh, streets and alleyways. And, and, and the way that that was being done, because as, as, as an equal, of equal benefit to all the citizens, and, and that's something that's on the agenda for later, is to, is to try and get that changed, where that would be a two-hundred-dollar, uh, processing fee, this is, this is the way I see it, for parks to benefit from all, uh, vacations of alleys, streets and alleys down the road. And that's, that's why the thing was, was knocked in the head.
Mr. Perkypile?
Mr. Levine, you handed out ordinance number twenty-one forty.
This is the wrong.
And, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
That's wailed.
As in a hur.
No, wait, no, is we're going to write it wrong?
This has got to be incorrect.
That's incorrect.
Okay, okay, just like, can somebody read the current one?
There is a twenty-one ninety-five, apparently.
Correct.
Right here, okay, which I don't have a copy of. And I don't know what happened to my copy.
I believe it's sitting in my car.
I thought I had a copy of everything in the world.
Okay, our basic discussion came down to number one, trying to rush this through before we made the changes. That was a big showstopper right there. The other part was what Terry had brought up, let's make this within city limits, not within the three-hundred-and-twenty, right?
Well, yeah, and, 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 and doing on a processing fee.
Right.
Which, you know, I think parks is entitled to.
Right. So number seven, section seven says, resulting funds from the sale or lease of streets and alleys located in the three-hundred-and-twenty acres. Okay, we need to change the three-hundred-and-twenty to within city limits. Is that what you're asking?
No, I, I, I think that it needs to be, to split, and that it would be, you'd separate, like, these parcels that they're discussing, you're not gonna worry about those, but, but to vacations of streets and alleys would be, would be a processing fee, and that, and that processing fee, by another ordinance, would go into, into the parks coffers.
Okay.
I think it needs to be, that needs to be an equitable position.
So we need to change it from the three-hundred-and-twenty to the city limits in regards to what you just said.
Vacations of streets and alleys.
Vacations, okay.
Mr. Attorney?
You can't do that with this ordinance.
I understand that, that's what I'm.
Okay, what change do we need to do?
You can't change the three-hundred-and-twenty part in this. If you're listening to Mr. McClung's thing, uh, his suggestion, he's saying you're gonna have to do another ordinance, and then, and make it a processing fee instead of a sale fee. You're still disposing the property title, though, in the three-hundred-and-twenty, so you've got apples and oranges to some extent.
Okay, and this is.
But you can't, you can't just change that wording in this one to do it, at all.
Okay. So this is where it broke down, and this is where, rather than rush it through and then try to change it later, we needed to have you write a second ordinance that would take care of the rest of city limits?
I have a question for the attorney. Uh, Mr. Weaver, uh, as an example, uh, the vacation on, for Palo Pinto that we've done, how, how's the city gonna transfer title to, to those people?
If I'm not mistaken, that's within the three-hundred-and-twenty, and if it's within.
You're mistaken, it's not.
If it's not, then the city will, will simply do it by the ordinance that vacates the property. If it is within the three-hundred-and-twenty, we have to give them a quitclaim deed.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I wanted to know, because I, I don't know if it's done in the past, if it's done by deed, or, or, or just by the ordinance itself.
Now, sometimes, outside the three-hundred-and-twenty, uh, it has been requested that we also give them a quitclaim deed, and that has been done, I think, in the past occasionally. But that is, that's more suspenders in a belt, that's.
Isn't that all you give them? You don't give them a general warranty deed anyway, do you? So that's all you give them anyways, a quitclaim deed, correct? Even in the three-hundred-and-twenty, you're not doing a general warranty deed.
There has been a general warranty deed done at least once in the three-hundred-and-twenty, I believe, yes.
Since what, in eighteen seventy-eight, eighty-three, eighty-ninety?
Couple of years ago, couple of years ago.
I can see where, on, I don't know, I just, I just hate to make this thing just too darn complicated. But I, I think, I don't think you're getting hurt by doing it by deed. You're not gonna do it by a general warranty deed anyway. I, I don't recommend that the city do that.
It's not my, uh, call, but no, I wouldn't recommend giving general warranty deeds over most of it anyway.
No.
Uh, it has been, as I said, I believe, done, and it's been done in the fairly recent
So, where does that leave us?
Mr. Snyder?
Okay, so this ordinance is in regards to little green things on your map, strictly,
I hate to answer yes and no, but, uh, the only thing that it is out of balance with that, those little green things on the map, is the question of the fees, or the, uh, the collection for the, for properties that are inside the three-hundred-and-twenty acres. That sound right?
Mrs. Eller?
What's the status of these little, little green things? Shall we agree that we're gonna refer to this as little green things? Okay. Uh, what's the status of these? Are they prop, are, do people own these things? Are they on somebody's property, and are people under the impression that they own that land, or?
Not that I'm aware of. We, the, the city actually has the fee simple title, and we have a deed.
Okay, so I could own, I could own a piece of property in Eureka Springs and have a little green thing on it and not know? Is that what you're saying?
I guess that's possible, but I don't think that's the case. I, I don't think we've got those cases going on. So the little green things are completely separate issues, they're property that the city owns. Uh, I sincerely doubt it's possible that somebody has one, that they think is theirs.
But that's the non-conforming? The little green things are the non-conforming?
The one, the four, the forty, the forty-three. We don't know. They, they haven't been classified yet. So they're in one of those three classifications, those little green things.
Mr. Perkypile?
So, Mr. Levine, excuse me. What you've identified on that map are properties that could be sold as part of the land bank, not all of them, but, but many of them. And that's not every property that's, it's not every unopened alley or street that the city has, is that correct? Those are just identified properties that, that, as you said, had no general use for, like, a parks use, or for city parks, or public parks, or, or anything else.
It, it might be helpful if we didn't even mention the, the streets or alleys when we talk about the little green things. I mean, 'cause they're two separate issues.
But what I'm saying is that you've identified these as separate, these are more parcels.
These are parcels.
These are parcels. So we'll identify them as parcels.
Okay.
Okay.
Little green thing parcels.
Okay.
Mr. Snyder?
Okay, so, in order to clear all of this up, which I for one thought was done years ago, in order to get this passed, so y'all have your property and know how to take care of it, we need to pass this. But, in order to be able to get paid for vacating streets and alleys outside of the three-hundred-and-twenty, we have to come up with a second ordinance that covers that?
We cannot, the city cannot charge for any of those green spaces that are outside the three-hundred-and-twenty. That's not.
Even if we own it?
You don't own.
We don't, we don't, that's, that's the issue, we don't own it.
Oh, well, then, what are you talking about?
You're talking about a processing fee.
Okay, well, that's what I mean. Okay, so I worded it wrong.
That's not the site to sell it.
Okay, so I worded it the wrong way. So, outside the three-hundred-and-twenty, we need a second ordinance that designates a processing fee, just like this is supposed to designate a processing fee, right? Guys?
We're talking, the land, the land bank ordinance is sale of property that the city owns, which is not germane to what you just discussed.
Okay. So, God, this is confusing.
But what might be germane to what you just said is that, that we're dealing with that separately, I believe, uh, or, in, you know, in another area. I think, well, all we need to deal with now are just these parcels, and with the land bank, we're not talking about streets or alleys, okay? Just these parcels that, that parks does not want to, in this land bank, is that correct?
That's not what this. Do you want, are you saying you wanna pull out this number seven?
Can I say the most recent?
Well, I, I think the concept of number seven, even if we pulled it out of this ordinance, it's gotta be dealt with, whether the city's gonna charge for it or not, you know?
I mean, I, I, I think we're trying to make something really complicated here, that's really not as complicated as it needs to be. Uh, anytime the city deeds off a piece of property off these right-of-ways, streets or alleys, I mean, it's done by a quitclaim deed, whether it's in the three-hundred-and-twenty or not in the three-hundred-and-twenty. My concern is that, whether it's in the three-hundred-and-twenty or not in the three-hundred-and-twenty, that they're all treated equally, and, and, and are charged a processing fee once, once the process is done, and, and it goes to ordinance, and, and it's, and it's done with. And they're all treated the same. The three-hundred-and-twenty acres, nothing differently than Palo Pinto.
Just, just for clarification, are, are you saying that the city would sell the property for the processing fee, or is that in addition to the price of the property?
No, 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 there's no price for the land.
Inside the three-hundred-and-twenty, there is.
Which is what?
What?
You're, you're, if I'm hearing you correctly, you're trying to treat platted streets that we have fee simple interest on, the same as platted streets that we don't have fee simple interest on.
Absolutely. It's, it's a processing.
I'm not saying, I agree with that, I'm saying, I'm just gonna clarify what you're saying.
Right, I understand it, but it's, it's a processing fee that everyone in the city that is applying for a vacation of street or alley is treated the same, whether they're in the three-hundred-and-twenty acres, or outside of three-hundred-and-twenty acres. Those in the three-hundred-and-twenty acres can be held captive and paid, because they're getting fee simple title for it, but they're not, they're not getting fee simple title, they're gonna get a quitclaim deed. Are you gonna provide title insurance to them on that? You know, you're not, you're not giving a general warranty deed. You're, you're just gonna quitclaim it. Treat everybody the same? What's, how hard is that to understand?
Mr. Perkypile?
Uh, then I, I would direct this, because you are a realtor, how would we do that? How would you suggest that we do that, sir? I don't.
You set it up as, as a processing fee, for anytime someone applies for a vacation, then they, they go to parks, they go through the process just like it is, and upon completion of the process, they pay two-hundred dollars. How difficult is that?
Mr. Perkypile?
What would we have to do to, and, and, it's two questions. Would parks agree to do that, and what would we need to do to this ordinance to have that occur?
Well, I can't speak on behalf of parks, I'm only one commissioner, okay? Personally, I can tell you, I don't agree with that. Terry and I have a healthy disagreement, uh, in this regard. Personally, if you wanna treat everybody the same with regard to a fee, I, I can see that. Everybody's charged the same processing fee for a vacation request, whether the city owns fee simple interest or not. But, this, in, in my humble opinion, the city should sell for, uh, fair market value, whatever it owns. Obviously, it can't sell what it doesn't own.
How do you determine fair market value? You're an appraiser, you tell me how. On one of those vacations of streets or alleys.
I'm not saying it's easy. I'm not saying, not saying that by any stretch.
Is it worth the price of appraisal?
I'm not even saying I wanna do it.
I doubt it.
But, but, uh, I know you wanna treat everybody the same, but, but, but unfortunately, they're not the same. You know, one you own, one you don't own.
Oh, come on.
And that's where I draw the distinction, but.
Okay.
And you're not technically also treating them the same, because they're not the same in the eyes of a court. Because when you have the ones that are outside the three-hundred-and-twenty, there's a court process that can be initiated. When they're inside the three-hundred-and-twenty, nobody can take that land from us, if we say no.
Okay, so.
You can't adversely possess against the city, you can't do anything else to take them away from the city.
The, the other thing I'd like to add, Mickey, if I could, is, and Terry, you know this as well as I do, because you're a realtor, you know, no two pieces of land are exactly the same. In fact, that's one of the inherent qualities of land, is it, is that all land is inherently different from all other land. And so, you wanna treat every situation the same, but every piece of land is entirely different from the next. So, and, and, again, in my humble opinion, it's impossible to treat them exactly the same, because they're inherently not the same.
You know, you're right.
Different size, different utility, different accessibility.
I'm talking about streets and alleys.
I understand that.
Okay, so you've got a thirty-foot street, and fifteen feet is going to each side, to the property owner on each side. What effectively can you do with that? How can you appraise that, put in an effective value as a piece of property that's fifteen feet wide and a hundred feet long? What can you do with that, to get what, you know, how can you justify the value?
Without knowing the circumstances surrounded, I just can't answer that. I, I don't think you can address that across the board for every, every situation. I just, I find that impossible personally, but that's just me.
Well, let me get Ms. Snyder first.
Well, and you need to pay attention. Is there any reason why we can't make vacation of streets and alleys, a flat two-hundred, or whatever we would come up with, and any other parcels, it would depend? You know, separate the two types of land, the, the streets and alleys totally separate their own little group, at a price, regular, for everybody within city limits, versus parcels scattered wherever in the three-hundred-and-twenty?
I think that's inherent in the argument that is going on between here, and somewhat between here, because the, there is a difference, at least in, I think, our minds, of how the alleys are. You're talking about a processing fee, which, I'm not even sure a court would allow, but, uh, anyway, what, you, you could differentiate a, this ordinance, so that it doesn't, like, by taking out that paragraph, so it doesn't even cover those sales, and then you could create a different section in the code. But right now, there is a section in the code that says those in the three-hundred-and-twenty have to be paid for, and it gives a specific rate if they're of low value, and if they're of a higher value, the city is to charge the higher value. And to address how you sell a fifteen-foot plot, I'm quite sure you've had a neighbor buy a fifteen-foot plot off one another, to get access one place or another. And you have to come up with a value. I know I've had court cases where we've argued over triangles that started at a point and go to fifteen-foot on the other end, and thousands of dollars have been spent to come up with a value of who owns, or who pays how much for that triangle.
Sure.
And so there is, there is a way to determine the value. I, I've got to. And so, there is, there is a way to determine the value. I, I've got to, granted, it's not an easy way always.
Anything can be appraised. Everything is appraised.
You bet it can be.
Yeah.
And the appraisal may be more expensive than the land's even worth.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue with you there.
It's just, it's not, it's not an equitable situation.
Can we have two separate ordinances, one for the vacation of alleys and streets, the other one with parcels? They each have their own guidelines and rules, their own way to figure out money. But this way, the streets and alleys, if they're within city limits, the processing fee would be the same, and whatever piece of paper it is to do, quitclaim whatever, depending on where it's at, depends on what gets done. But the thing is, it's fair to everybody. Vacation of an alley or street, period, would be the same.
Go ahead.
I, I think the processing fee should not be included in this ordinance, because I think that's an administrative, uh, function, you know, that, that's a, it's just like anything else, you know, you have a fee. So that, that's take, I would put that aside. The, when this, when the council wrote the value of streets, it, it wasn't just limited to that 320 acres, it actually was the entire city. So I think there was an error that was made back whenever that was written, that it was, it was perceived that you could charge for streets and alleys. If I'm, I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm correct on that.
You're right.
That it was, it was, uh, it was $200 or whatever, blah, blah, blah. But, um, I think that was an error. So then we subsequently found out in the last three or four years that we did own 320 acres. So that's all we can ever charge for.
So it's back to two ordinances, or what?
Mr. McClung?
You know, personally, I, I, I have no problem with this coming back onto the table and, and passing, you know, with removal of section seven. That's, that's my beef. And then we can go in and amend the other ordinance that's already in place as far as what we charge and how we charge. That's, that's my, those are my, that's my contention. I don't have, you know, I understand about all the parcels, you know, you got this piece and that piece laying out there, and we don't need it, let's put a price on it so we can get rid of it. That's business.
So you're just saying you don't want streets and alleys listed in this, period?
Not, not under the pretense that it is, no.
Any problems with that? Leave streets and alleys off and just deal with the parcels?
Well, it, it, you know, it leaves that part of it unresolved, but that doesn't mean we can't, can't still resolve it. Yeah.
Exactly.
Uh, that's, it's called progress. Further ahead of where we are.
Excellent.
Mr. Perkypile?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, approve ordinance number 2195. Uh, would this be the first reading, or would this be the third reading?
Be a new number?
It's had to be resubmitted.
Okay, I, then I make a motion?
No, no, no.
What?
No.
It's a reconsideration, so it stays under the same number.
Even though it's failed?
Uh-huh.
Ah, okay.
So do we start with a?
And you're, you're where, you, you're a reconsideration of the vote that was taken. So if that was a vote for the second or third reading, whatever reading it was on.
Okay, I amend that motion to move.
As long as he is one of the majority.
Okay.
He is.
Nice, Steve.
Okay.
My motion is to approve ordinance number 2195 on its second reading, since it failed on its second.
By title only, is that what you're saying?
By, by title only.
What about the amendment?
Then we make the amendment.
Then you make the amendment.
Okay. And we will make the amendment after that.
Do I have a second?
Wait a minute.
Second!
Why aren't we amending before we're approved?
Discussion.
You could go.
Discussion.
You can't do it that way. It's against the law.
That is my discussion.
Okay. You have a, a motion, a second? Uh, we need a vote, uh, no?
Yeah, because.
The motion is to bring it on its second reading, no?
The motion, if I understood, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is to reconsider the second, two, let's see.
It's to approve ordinance 2195 on the second reading by title only, and Mr. McClung's seconding.
No, that won't work.
Okay.
It's got to be read it for, uh, reconsideration on its second.
That's exactly what I said.
And that was?
I suppose that we read ordinance number 2195.
By title?
By title only on its second.
For reconsideration.
Reading for reconsideration.
Do I have a second?
While we're at it, can I amend it at this point?
No.
No.
Then you, then you would read it, it's not approved, then you can amend it, and then you can take your vote.
Second!
Okay.
Okay. Roll call.
Let's. What are you amending?
This is just to read it.
Reconsideration.
So you can get back to work on it.
This is a motion to approve ordinance 2195 on its second reading by title only for reconsideration.
Okay.
Not approved. Take the word approve out of there.
Okay.
That is correct, for reconsideration.
Thank you, sir. Terry McClung?
Yes.
Dee Perkypile?
Yes.
Joyce Eller?
Yes.
Mickey Schneider?
Yes.
Four, zero.
Okay, I'm.
Now she has to read it.
Now she reads it by title only.
Ordinance 2195 and ordinance for the creation of a land bank committee for use and disposing of certain unneeded properties and obtaining certain other needed properties and for other purposes.
Now you're in discussion, and if you want to make a motion to amend, you can do that. Mr. McClung?
I, I'd like to make a motion to amend ordinance number 215, 2195, uh, and that amendment is to remove section seven.
I'll second.
Okay.
Remove section seven and renumber the following paragraphs.
And re, and renumber the following paragraphs.
Now we're in discussion, all right?
Need a second.
I seconded.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion.
Discussion.
Okay, amendment can just be a voice vote?
Can.
Okay, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. That's the amendment. You want approval on its second reading?
I make a motion to approve ordinance number 2195.
As amended.
As amended on its second reading.
By title only.
By title only.
Second.
And we suspended the rules.
With an amendment, should it be by title only?
Uh, it actually, you don't need the word title only, because you've already read it. You're just, you're just approving.
Right.
All right.
As amended.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, it's approved on its second reading.
As amended.
How many years, Bruce, has this been going?
Okay.
We did good tonight.
Mr. Perkypile?
Just look at what I suggested about that.
This is a question to the mayor and to the lawyer. Could we, could we go ahead and approve this tonight on its third reading, third and final reading?
After five years?
It's up to y'all.
Uh, I think we should.
Well, make a motion. Up in there.
I make a motion to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2195 as amended, uh, on, by, by title only for its third and final reading.
Second!
Discussion.
After five years, we're in a rush?
And that was a combination of things. So you want to suspend the rules and approve?
2195.
No, to read.
Read.
This is just to read.
It doesn't have to say amended either, because it's been amended, and so it's.
Suspend the rules and read 2195.
By title only.
By title only, as, that's already done, right?
That's already done. Okay, roll call.
Second.
Second was McClung.
Thank you.
We'll stumble through this.
Just copying Mrs.'s. He gave it to me.
Alex James's.
Probably not. Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes, siree.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Four, zero. All right. Ordinance 20, ordinance number 2195, an ordinance for the creation of a land bank committee for use and disposing of certain unneeded properties and obtaining certain other needed properties and for other purposes.
Mr. McClung?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance 2195.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call?
Third reading.
Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yep.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Four, zero.
Can I get your autograph?
All right.
And just remind us to work on that other part.
Moving right along, ordinance number 2198, business licenses for multifamily, second reading.
Okay.
Oh, my papers ain't broken.
Mayor, for ten?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry.
I spoke with the, um, with Bobby Ray, our city building inspector, about this, and he kind of explained that we've got an issue here with this particular ordinance. Uh, in particular, one, a certificate of occupancy for tourists, lodging and such, commercial, it is considered to be commercial, but, and, and so therefore, they, they can, they have to, they have to, um, they have to have a certificate of occupancy and follow the city's rules. However, if you're dealing with residences, um, there's no, there's no, really no way to force a resident of the city to comply with a certificate of occupancy, if we're talking about one, two, three, or four apartments, you know, or even a condo. So I think we have a, an issue with this, and I wanted to bring this up to our city attorney as well, that I think we need to, to kind of reconsider this. I'm not sure that we're, you know, that we can legally or realistically, uh, force owners of apartments, you know, or duplexes to, to get a certificate of occupancy, even though all it requires is a fire extinguisher, uh, two ways of egress, and a smoke detector, as far as I know. Um, I'd like to postpone voting on this until we get opinion from the city attorney and also a, some more input from the, our building official.
Uh, your motion is then to postpone this till the next meeting?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
Okay, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Uh, it, it might be a good idea to have, uh, our building inspector come and kind of give us a little background, too. So, you know, it, it helps take the guesswork out of it for us.
Okay. Anything you want to direct the city attorney? I mean, he'll need some direction from counsel before, before he looks into this.
Well, yes, I mean, I think we need to look into the aspect of one being commercial, the other being residential, and what, what, um, what authority does the city have over either one of those?
You want to make a motion to direct the city attorney to?
I'd like to make a motion to direct the city attorney to investigate.
Second.
Certificate of occupancy, commercial versus residential.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Number four, ordinance 2199, basically determining the fee for the Palo Pinto vacation.
Move to discuss?
Second.
Ms. Schneider?
Um, I know there's been a lot of confusion about this. The $1 fee had been bandied about, so to speak. Can we just put in the $1? Do we have to go through all kinds of hoops, or what?
The question that determines whether there is a fee, there wouldn't be a fee if this is outside the 320 acres, as I think Mr. McClung said it was a little bit ago. And, uh, I don't know.
It is outside the 320.
If it's outside the 320, there is no fee.
Uh, but the way the ordinance is written, we've got a blank. We have to have a number in there.
It'd be zero. You can't charge outside.
At this point, no, we can't charge, okay.
A simple motion to reflect the, Mr. Perkypile?
I'd like to make a motion to reflect that the fee will be zero.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye. Are there discussion, Mr. McClung?
Well, just to reiterate one point, is that you see, this is outside the 320 acres and it's zero, and if it was inside the 320 acres, there would be remuneration involved. Let's make it fair.
Ms. Schneider?
Do we need to remove the word fee from the motion? Because if it's outside the 320, we can't have a fee. We can have, um, what you call it?
Have anything.
Right now.
Okay.
Until we make it so.
We need to specify that as of this night, it's zero, this is not reflective, what we've been talking about doing for the future?
No.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right. Item five, ordinance number 2200, vacating portion of Nutt Street, second reading.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, suspend the rules and read ordinance 2200 by title only.
Second reading.
Second reading.
Second reading by title only.
Mr. Perkypile's seconded. Discussion? No, wait, we have to read it first, and then we'll get around to the discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Excuse me?
Roll.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Second reading?
It's a roll call.
It's suspending rules.
Oh, 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 sorry.
I'm sorry, and who was the defendant on that?
Mr. Perkypile?
I was.
Thank you. Ms. Schneider?
Yes.
Mr. McClung?
Yes.
Mr. Perkypile?
Yes.
Ms. Eller?
Yes.
Four, zero. Ordinance 2200, an ordinance vacating an unopened portion of Nutt Street.
Do we have a motion to approve it on its second reading?
A motion to approve ordinance number 2200 on its second reading.
Second. Discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No.
Zero.
Item number six is the auditorium commission ordinance. With, uh, with approval of council, I'd, I'd like to possibly table this to a workshop. Uh, Mr. Mitchell's not here, and it's, you saw the information that was given to you, and it's pretty involved in trying to craft an ordinance, hopefully blending some from the state and some from the city, might be a bit more involved than we have time for tonight.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone it, and we want to set a date for a workshop?
Well, we have our, our. Well, we have our consolidator here, if she can find out when we can.
I'd like to ask Diane if we could impose upon you, once again, to set a date for workshop for the auditorium commission.
Do we have a second on that motion?
Yep.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Can I get a motion for a 10-minute recess?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
10-minute break.
Okay, welcome back to the January 13th meeting. Item number two under new business, hours of operation and animals in C3. Mr. Perkypile?
I move to discuss.
Do we have a second? Ms. Snyder? Mr. Perkypile?
I'd like to postpone this because I really don't have any idea what it's about.
I had questions, I had questions myself.
Is this that thing about you can't have a monkey after nine o'clock or something up on, in the Gabioli Chapel? Is that what we're talking about?
Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right, posted pending planning action, I'm assuming number four is also postponed, then?
Yes.
Let's see, code was rewrite planning commission procedures for vacating property. Mr. McClung?
Yeah, motion to discuss.
Is there a second?
Um, basically what we just talking about earlier with parks, and, and we have, that was provided by Beverly, this sheet that she gave us some time back, street vacation procedures, which is how it's done. And what I propose is that, now there, she has in here, there should be an application fee for at least $100. I think that needs to be an application fee for $200 for those vacations, or a, not necessarily a, an application fee, but a processing fee, or you could call it an application fee, that's, if they don't, if they don't receive the vacation, then they can get it back, you know, refundable fee in that respect. Application fee, processing fee, whatever you should want to call it, citywide for the street vacations, and then, and do with way, or, I guess what it would be, would be amending the existing ordinance that we have, which I couldn't find in my book, you know, on the $200 or appraised value thing that's in there.
Question is, city attorney, we should have this in the form of an ordinance?
It would have to be in an ordinance if he wants it to remove the $200 fee that is already there, because it is done by ordinance, yes.
And it might be just as easy to nullify that one, because we don't even know where it is, and then, and then just, what do you think, Tim? Would it be to do that or to?
I think it would probably be best to do, you could do it as one. I do have a problem with your application fee being refundable, because then that almost smacks of us selling those properties again, so.
Was there another name?
I can explain that better to you, but.
All right, a processing fee.
Because if you, if you don't charge it unless they get their vacation, then it's almost like a purchase price. So if you charge them, if you charge them the fee, whether or not they get their vacation, then it's a fee, an application fee. If you charge it only if they get their vacation, it smacks an awful lot like you're charging them for the actual property.
Mr. Perkypile?
Well, but, how do you, how do you, how, how could we justify that, you know, if they were turned down by planning or parks? How could we justify charging somebody $200? "Oh, I'm sorry, we'll keep your money, but, you know, we're not going to give you your vacation," and that's my question to him.
Cities do it all the time.
Right.
Cities have an application fee, it covers the cost of having the process done for an inspection, it can be done in building inspections, it's done for fees for connecting to sewers, even if you don't connect necessarily, it's done for lots of things.
But there, you're receiving something, you're receiving a benefit.
You are receiving the benefit of the process to see whether you qualify to get the property or not. It's a fee, it's a fee to cover the cost of doing it.
Mr. Levine?
If, if that's an issue, the very first thing that an applicant does when they come to parks is I go with them and look at their property and look at their plat and see where, how it connects with things, and I don't know if this is legal or not, but I would, I usually give people the very, very, my humble opinion, that, you know, this could be part of a trails that's going to come up, and I have said as much, I said, there could be some contention about this, you know, I don't know if that helps at all, but I can certainly prepare somebody for their, and do for what they're looking, looking at when they go through the various processes, for what that's worth.
But that's just parks, that's not.
That's not the whole process.
Yeah, it's not the whole process.
Well, since they do have to go through all the different commissions, so we are spending a lot of personnel time, so, it's a fee.
It's volunteer personnel time.
Kind of.
Like us.
It's not completely, because this council's paid, and this council has to act partially.
Mr. McClung?
Um, you know, I, I respect our city attorney's opinion on this, and, but I think maybe it might be splitting hairs, and it, I still think we can, we could work it as a processing fee or an application fee and, and make it refundable. I don't see the harm in it.
I don't see the harm in keeping $100 either.
$200.
That would change it.
What I want to make it is $200.
Well, council will have to vote on, on, you know, how you want to proceed with this, whether you want to incorporate it in, in ordinance or not, so.
Well, there is, there is that existing ordinance now, so it needs, it needs to be done by ordinance, so we can eliminate that, or correct that, which, it's one or the other. We do new ordinance or amend that existing ordinance. And so I leave that to Mr. Weaver, to which way he would like to go, either amend or, or rewrite another one, striking the old one, at a processing fee of $200 per application.
Can I second that?
It's a motion.
That is a motion.
Discussion? I've got a second there, a discussion. If there's no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right. Item seven, setting a budget workshop.
Um, don't we have to have the budget approved by the end of the month?
Yes.
So we need a workshop like yesterday?
Mr. McClung?
I was just going to say the same thing that you said. I think this, for a workshop, we need this one first and foremost, because it, it might take two.
This week. Okay, how's Wednesday sound for everybody?
When and where?
This coming Wednesday, day after tomorrow.
Wednesday, like, you mean the day after tomorrow?
Correct.
Okay.
Any preferences on time?
I'm good, not too early.
You want to do it later? Four, five o'clock, five o'clock?
I don't care.
What's, what's?
What, what about Lonnie? Would it be better in the daytime for him, or?
It would, it would be, because he lives in Fayetteville, he has things he needs to take care of by 8:00.
I'm pretty flexible.
All right. 10:00 AM, everybody do that?
10:00 AM.
10:00 AM.
What time?
Would you email us all of that also?
I can do 10:00 AM.
Okay.
I'm not thrilled with it, but I can do it.
Okay. Set meeting dates for two, for this year. Do we want to stay with the same, same time, same place?
I make a motion that we stay with the second and fourth Mondays of the month.
Yes.
Second on that? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
6:00 PM.
Okay, mayor pro tem for 2014. Mr. Perkypile?
I make a motion that we elect Mr. DeVito, if he is so inclined to accept as mayor pro tem for 2014.
Yeah, if I only have to do it once a year, I'm down with that. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Okay, rules and procedures for 2014, which is adopting Roberts Rules of Order, generally, I'm sorry. Mr. McClung?
I make a motion that we go by the rules of fly by the seat of your pants.
I'll second that one.
Oh, that's Roberts Rules of Order.
Roberts Rules of Order, okay, that's a second discussion.
Aren't we doing the abbreviated Roberts this last two years?
Were we, kind of sort of?
Reader's Di, Reader's Digest version.
Well, it's whatever that short version.
Whatever we use for 2013.
Well, we, we don't fight that much, so we don't really have to get into it so heavy.
Okay, so we'll go with the same that we did for 2013.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And number 11 is reacquisition of 531 Springs. Yeah, well, we got, we breezed through that so fast, it didn't matter.
I'll give you the Cliff Notes version of the history of 531 Spring. It's a building that's next door to us. I think it was in Parks, Parks has always maintained it and worked with it, and about six or seven years ago, I think, because of perceived conflict with the commissioner and the parks, the city decided to take the building out of Parks jurisdiction, and there was a kids program there. And I think, Tim, if I, if I'm not mistaken, I believe you may have been involved in the taking it. I don't know, maybe it was five or six years ago. Anyway, it's laid, laid fallow for the last four years, and the Parks Maintenance Crew has started to adopt it as a building to do some projects in, in the cold this winter. Downstairs, we store the CAPC tents and store some of the Christmas ornaments, blah, blah, blah. Anyway, to make a long story short, we'd like to ask the council if we could retain the jurisdiction that we once formally had over that building, and of course, that would have us paying the insurance and the light bill and all those things.
Ms. Snyder?
Okay, I've been dealing with this building for, oh my God, seven, eight years now. There's a couple of problems. Firstly, I have no problem with your request, but this is part of the property that was deeded to the city eons ago, and it specifies in the big old book, it specifies that all of this Parks land is to be used strictly for children. This came up back during Kathy Harrison's years, and I researched the whole book, all of this property can only be used for the benefit of children, it specifies that. Now, to follow that, Eureka Kids, who had been in there for years, finally had to leave because they have a very serious mold problem. Have your guys seen, dealt, wintertime, I don't know how mold goes, but there is a very serious mold problem.
We've used the basement for storage only, we have a dehumidifier we're putting down there, and we stay upstairs for the work.
Okay, because it is a very serious mold problem, which is why they finally left. In view of the mold problem and the age of the building, I don't see that this can safely be cleaned, reconstructed, whatever they do, to make it childworthy again. That being said, we also have to go by the deed, it's for use of children only. If it's Parks, the Parks Commission using it, that is geared at children, and I think we can probably slide by. But we have to be careful.
Mr. Perkypile?
I'd like to make a motion to return this building to the auspices of Parks for its use and benefit for all the citizens.
Deed says children.
Including the children.
No, it shouldn't be including, it should be.
Okay, for the benefit of the children.
For all of those children.
For all us children. No, for the benefit, just return it to you, because as you indicated, that will be indirect to the benefit of the children that use a park there.
You want to identify it as 531?
Yes, I should. Okay, so, we'd like to return the, the building, commonly known as building, and it's 531's, at 531 Spring.
That's correct.
To the ownership and auspices of Parks Department.
It's not ownership.
Yeah, auspices.
Use.
Second.
Control.
Uh, let me ask the city attorney one thing, can this be done by a motion?
It was originally removed by a resolution, I think. So it can be done by a resolution.
Okay.
Doesn't need an ordinance, but you can do an oral resolution, but I would think you would be better off to confirm it later, whether they written one next.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for the city attorney to draft.
Draft a resolution.
For the next meeting.
Okay, for the next meeting.
And you second this? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
I have workshop down here as number 14, but that's all I have down here.
12 is workshop, RA.
12.
Ordinance 2189, rate increase workshop?
Yes, parking fees.
Oh, okay.
I don't see why that, I don't see, oh, well, okay, I don't see why it needs a workshop. I mean, I would think a half-hour discussion would.
Did we have a second workshop on that?
We've only had one so far.
It was postponed, due to weather, for the last meeting.
First one, correct. Diane, add that to your schedule of workshops, but not anytime soon, not the next week.
We probably need the CAPC input on this, since it affects them, so somebody from CAPC should be there. But they need to.
They will be.
CAPC needs to talk about it first, I would think.
Well, I thought we were supposed to be having a joint workshop with us and CAPC or the people there in.
Well, that was when they, they changed, they made so many changes there, I don't know, I don't care.
Right, well, we, we need their input, we can't just.
Yeah, we need their input.
If you're going to do that, you need the chamber of commerce, too.
Chamber?
Sure.
But I know that's what we aimed for originally. I know that's what we aimed for originally, was all of us getting together and discussing, but we couldn't even get our guys together.
Well, we'll get a meeting date set, and if they want to attend, great, you know, we can't direct them to attend.
So what's the agreement at this point?
The time and date to be determined.
For all three NABs.
Well, we'll set it up between... Council and CAPC and then Chamber wants to attend, great.
We need to decide one person, from the other ones, just for the initial talk. The two mics and the council.
Okay, agenda setting. Ms. Eller? Any agenda items?
No, I don't think I have anything.
Ms. Snyder?
Yeah, it's been brought to our attention yet again, keeps being brought up. We need to do something about whatever steps we have to take to get the parking lot holes over here, you know, the collapsing part, dealt with. This is getting pathetic, and if we have to put a foot down a quorum court, I'll be glad to do it. But we need to find out what steps, Mr. Attorney, we need to take to get this dealt with.
To get what dealt with?
Where the parking lot is collapsing over next door to the auditorium or it's blocked off. It's been what, four or five years?
Oh yeah, that's major engineering, isn't it?
Doesn't matter, it's a quorum court. Somebody's got to do something, and what steps do we take, Mr. Attorney?
It's just agenda setting.
It's agenda setting.
But I mean, but that's why we need to discuss. I'm telling him so he can be ready.
Let me get a second first. Okay, anything, anything else?
I don't think so.
Okay, Mr. McLemone?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Perkypile?
A couple of things. I'm going to open up a can of worms here.
Oh, good. Let's go fishing.
I'd like to add an agenda item to discuss the, the water and sewer rate increases that are required to meet our bond covenants.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Your other item?
Uh, the other item was brought forward by the taxi tonight, and that is an issue with the kind of vehicles that can, can use to operate as a limo. And I'm not sure if he meant jumbo taxis or limos.
All righty. Okay, council comments, Mr. Perkypile?
Hey, I would like to say that we've got our first donation to the blackbassdam.org fund. It's directly, it's in Cornerstone Bank, safely secured in a, in a line item, separate account. We'd like to tell everybody that, you know, if you want to donate, it's tax deductible. You can just save a copy of that check and address it to the city of Eureka Springs. What we plan to do is try and raise funds initially to study and develop a, plans and specifications to repair the dam. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. McLemone?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Snyder?
I just wanted to say, no, I'm not sunburn, allergic reactions suck. Don't go there.
Ms. Eller?
No, I don't have anything.
Well, I guess I'm still on council, so I'll have some comments. We have Eureka's first film festival coming up January 23rd to the 25th. And although I've not been involved, I've been close to the participants involved and it's turning out to be an exciting event. They've got close to 35 to 40 submissions, which they've had to pare down to be able to hold them in a reasonable time period. And it starts Thursday night with an opening party, and then there'll be filmings on Friday and Saturday with the awards going out Saturday night. If you go to the indie film, Eureka Springs Indie Film Festival, you can find the list of events and it should be in all the newspapers here shortly. And that's my comments. For note, city offices are closed on January 20th due to Martin Luther King Junior Day. And once again, the indie film festival will start Thursday night, January 23rd and run through Saturday night, the 25th. And I have a motion to adjourn, please?
There's also the, the program at the Mason Park Hotel.
Oh, Ozark Folk Festival.
Country Ozark Music, uh, Country Folk Festival. I can't remember the name.
Yeah, I think it's... Anyway, that runs, what, the 24th through the 26th, 7th, something like that? There'll, there'll be information and you could probably go to the CAPC's website and listed there, the calendar of events.
Mason Park Hotel.
But I've seen the lineup and they've got some really good talent, so that'll be a nice festival. We've got something at least to do during the month of January, which we've had very few things to, to add to our agenda during the month of January. So with that said, still looking for a motion to adjourn. So moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. We're out of here.